Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome to the April 20th, 2015, Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera. Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Bishop Colber, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another City Council meeting. We thank you for all of our citizens. We thank you for our mayor, for our council, all the people in the city of Waukegan and the surrounding neighborhoods. For you said, "Love your neighbor." Pray that it's blessed in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you, Bishop. Mr. (inaudible). I have one thing under mayor's comments. Two weeks ago, the Youth Conservation Corps took it upon themselves to go down to the County Library and clean the whole library of property up. It was a large undertaking, and I really appreciate it. Tom Beer, you here? Tom? Please come forward.
(coughs)
Tom, this is a letter, a recommendation from the City Waukegan Youth Conservation Corps. This certificate of achievement for their volunteer cleanup efforts at the County Library on April 6th, 2015. I'd like to present this to you out there, please.[141.19][141.19](Applause) There again, ladies and gentlemen, volunteers. They volunteered their time. Plus, plus, tax, nothing. The end result was a clean piece of property up. Now, can I say something?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you. Audience time. John Belmonte. John, please, to the mic, please.
(Inaudible) Mayor. I brought this up during the Safety Committee hearing about that judgment that was awarded to an Arlington Heights man who had his gun collection seized illegally. And also, it's not unusual, and it's not just this area. Now, Waukegan has got this policy of confiscating a firearm when no crime has been committed. Allegedly, it's for ballistics testing to see if it was involved in anything else. Well, if that's what it is, it becomes a fishing expedition, which is clearly against the Fourth Amendment. Also, under the Illinois municipal guide for seizure of firearms, that is not in there. It's not authorized. If you do not have a reasonable suspicion or probable cause, the person has to prove they're innocent rather than you proving that they're guilty. So I think we ought to review that police policy before the city winds up in court a little bit more often than it is now and wind up paying these one-sided judgments. So that's pretty much all I had to say about it. The one that brought it to my attention this year was that dog that got shot. That was the kickers.
Yeah. John, I'd like to, we've been having issues on that, and Corporation Counsel Steve Martin has been working on that policy, so I'll let him speak on behalf of that policy.
I'm aware of your concerns, and I have spoken to the Chief Wallace. We've discussed it. I am looking at the policy, and we will address the policy to make sure it's in conformity with all state, federal, and local ordinances relative to our conduct, and I can assure you that it'll be accomplished in a timely manner.
I have spoken to the Chief also, and he's assured me that they're going to be reviewing policies, but my main thing is just to keep the city out of trouble, and these judgments really get to be a drag. We're going through all these overturned convictions right now, and there's no point in winding up behind the eight ball in the future.
Well, there's no more concern expressed than my office and the mayor as to litigation for the city, and I can assure you, we'll make every effort to make sure we stay out of court and we abide by all federal and state statutes and laws.
Okay, I'm not going to beat it to death anymore.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Matt, 1626 Hickory.
Thanks, sir. I'm going to try to keep this brief. So my name's Matt. I think I, you know, have met a couple of you aldermen. Would like to meet the rest, but I've lived here in Waukegan for a couple of years, and I'm very involved in the labor movement. My union, the American Federation of Government Employees, represents federal workers, but we are very involved with a lot of the statewide fight for the middle class. And with the governor going around the state still in campaign mode, attacking the policies and the working people of this state, we've been trying to educate local lawmakers about just what the policies he's proposing would entail and how they would hurt the middle class. I've printed off a couple of flyers and reports. Would you mind if I?
No, go right ahead.
Okay. And, you know, one of the things, one of the things we've also done is drafted a resolution, you know, Waukegan being a city of progress, I think it'd be great if, instead of passing the regressive resolutions that would hurt the middle class in this town, if we were progressive and passed a resolution supporting workers and the middle class in Waukegan. I also have a couple of copies of this. I'll pass around. I'll try to stick around as late as I can tonight. I might have to run, but it's pretty easy to get ahold of me. I live right on Larry Street, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie O'Meara.
Jamie O'Meara, 1318 Chestnut Street. I'm here representing Waukegan Main Street. I just want to take this last opportunity for the alderman who will be leaving service here in Waukegan for our city council to say thank you for the support that you've given us over the last four years of your tenure here as an alderman. Mr. Beedling has gone out and worked side by side with us to shovel snow during some of our snowstorms, and he's, I've seen him at numerous plays. I volunteer at Clockwise. I know Mr. Rivera has also been a big supporter of Main Street activities throughout his long tenure, so I thank you all for that, and I wish you all well on behalf of Main Street, and we still hope to see you downtown visiting our many venues. And I just want to give a quick plug to the three plays that are still ongoing. Two of them in our downtown. Clockwise Theater has Constant State of Panic. It's very well done, very intriguing staging, a great story. We also have The Lost World at Three Brothers Theater, which is good for all ages, so you can bring your kids, and that's a really fun kind of play to see, too. And then there's More Fun Than Bowling up at Bowen Park. I hope over the next couple of weeks, you'll choose one of those great artistic venues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Meara.[603.12][603.12](Applause)
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to seat Alderman Cunningham, please.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Newsome. All's in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Minutes. Motion to approve the minutes, regular minutes of April 6th, 2015. Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Beedling. All's in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Next, a resolution, proclamations, presentation, appointments. Item A, Resolution, 100th Year of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. Madam Clerk, would you please read that?
Resolution 15R-25. Whereas since forming in Waukegan in 1915, the Lake County Chamber of Commerce has continuously pursued its mission of identifying and serving the needs of Lake County businesses. And whereas Lake County Chamber serves as a regional organization helping businesses to expand the reach of their products and services with opportunities to help them make connections across Lake County. And whereas the Chamber begins its second century, they look forward to maximizing development strategies and technologies to enhance their mission. And now they're very resolved that Mayor Motley and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby recognize the Lake County Chamber of Commerce for its 100th years of distinguished service, dedication to the Lake County business community, and its firm commitment to general welfare and prosperity of Lake County, Illinois. Be it further resolved that a suitable ball's copy of this resolution signed by the mayor and city clerk be presented to the staff and members of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce at the city council meeting the 20th day of April, 2015.
Is Ron here? Anyone from the chamber here?
Yes.
Who would like to accept it on behalf of the motion?
(Inaudible)
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Cunningham to accept the resolution as presented. All's in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Can I have the chamber members up front, please?[730.00][730.00](Applause) The next resolution is to recognize Waze Soccer League. A lot of you may not know this, but I played this game my whole life. I refereed it. I coached it. I managed it, and I played against three of those gentlemen right there.[774.82][774.82](Laughter) And this guy here's from Estecas.[777.93][777.93](Laughter) So, gentlemen, please step to the front. Ladies and gentlemen, Waze is an organization.[783.43][783.43](Applause) Waze is an organization that helps youth. It keeps them out the streets. It gives them a place to play, a place to get organized, a place to thrive. These three gentlemen to my right, I had the privilege of working with over the last 20-plus years, and I, when their league was in trouble and I was in the Park District, I stepped up and helped them reform their league. The league now is more powerful than ever. I think you have, like, how many teams do you have now?
(Inaudible)
Seventy, 74 teams. Our children are no longer on the street. Our children are in an indoor arena or in a soccer field playing, enjoying themselves. So Maria, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution 15R-26. Whereas the Waukegan Association for Youth Soccer was established in 1997 in our community by volunteers to provide an active and pleasant sport for our youth. And whereas the Waukegan Association for Youth Soccer currently boosts a booster of more than 1,400 children between the ages of five to 17. And whereas the Waukegan Association for Youth Soccer provides a means to allow kids the opportunity to develop their soccer skills. And whereas the Waukegan Association for Youth Soccer helps to keep kids out of trouble by keeping them busy in a safe environment as well as active in a sport. And now it be a resolve that the Mayor Motley and Matty Mayors, the members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby recognize that many volunteers, players, and coaches of the Waukegan Association for Youth Soccer, for their leadership and for helping to promote our community through participating in Waukegans and the world's most popular sport. Be it further resolved that in suitable ball's copy of this resolution signed by the mayor and city clerk be provided, be presented to the Waukegan Association for Youth Soccer at the city council meeting the 20th day of April, 2015.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman May to accept the resolution as presented. All's in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Can I have the chamber members up front, please?[910.01][910.01](Applause) The next resolution is to recognize Waze Soccer League. A lot of you may not know this, but I played this game my whole life. I refereed it. I coached it. I managed it, and I played against three of those gentlemen right there.[924.82][924.82](Laughter) And this guy here's from Estecas.[927.12][927.12](Laughter) So, gentlemen, please step to the front. Ladies and gentlemen, Waze is an organization.[933.43][933.43](Applause) Waze is an organization that helps youth. It keeps them out the streets. It gives them a place to play, a place to get organized, a place to thrive. These three gentlemen to my right, I had the privilege of working with over the last 20-plus years, and I, when their league was in trouble and I was in the Park District, I stepped up and helped them reform their league. The league now is more powerful than ever. I think you have, like, how many teams do you have now?
(Inaudible)
Seventy, 74 teams. Our children are no longer on the street. Our children are in an indoor arena or in a soccer field playing, enjoying themselves. So Maria, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution 15R-26. Whereas the Waukegan Association for Youth Soccer was established in 1997 in our community by volunteers to provide an active and pleasant sport for our youth. And whereas the Waukegan Association for Youth Soccer currently boosts a booster of more than 1,400 children between the ages of five to 17. And whereas the Waukegan Association for Youth Soccer provides a means to allow kids the opportunity to develop their soccer skills. And whereas the Waukegan Association for Youth Soccer helps to keep kids out of trouble by keeping them busy in a safe environment as well as active in a sport. And now it be a resolve that the Mayor Motley and Matty Mayors, the members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby recognize that many volunteers, players, and coaches of the Waukegan Association for Youth Soccer, for their leadership and for helping to promote our community through participating in Waukegans and the world's most popular sport. Be it further resolved that in suitable ball's copy of this resolution signed by the mayor and city clerk be provided, be presented to the Waukegan Association for Youth Soccer at the city council meeting the 20th day of April, 2015.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman May to accept the resolution as presented. All's in favor?
Aye.
opposed? (Inaudible) 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 Next item on the agenda is the Finance Committee. Alderman Valco, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, a motion authorizing the proper city officials to extend the agreement for accounting services by and between the City of Waukegan and Accounting Principles for an amount not to exceed $75,000. Budget Code 100-103624436. And, Your Honor, and for members of the council that weren't on the Finance Committee, this is just an extension of a contract to, for an employee, just for an employee from Accounting Principles, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Item B, motion authorizing the proper city officials to award a contract to CDS Office Technologies for Building Department tablets and ancillary expenses in an amount not to exceed $44,420.49. Budget Code 100-200126495. For the members of the council that weren't here for the meeting, what this is, it's for 15 laptop computers for code enforcement. The code enforcement officers have to come in at the end of the day, sit at their desks for anywhere from one hour to one and a half hours to two hours, and do their reports. These laptops will let them take, will be able to be brought into their cars, and they can do their reports immediately after exiting the properties, and I so move. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye, but I, after the vote, Your Honor, I'm going to ask the chairman a few questions regarding that, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, and maybe I don't know if you know this or not, but what capability would they have? Would it be comparable to the system we have here inside the Building Department? Or would it just be to record some of the activities that go outside, as they do outside in making their rounds?
I believe, come on up, Dave. When we had our meeting, they're capable of doing the work in our department. I think they'd go into the server. Is that correct, sir?
That's it. That's correct. They're going to be fully, or are loaded with the governing software, but it's going to be, it's not fully mobile. It's going to be just, or just data entry in the field. It's going to be, or put into a docking station at the end of the day, and they'll download and they'll upload in the morning.
Okay, that's, and that's kind of what I was hoping for, yeah. Okay, thank you, Dave. Item C, motion recommending that the city council grant authorization to the Chief of Police to write off bad debt for aged parking tickets dated December 31st, 2011 or earlier, for a total amount of $247,070. And what this is, the last time that we did this was, I believe, 2006? Did we publicize?
2010.
2010, excuse me. There's an abnormal amount of tickets that are clogging the system, and they go all the way back till 1991. And some, when the Traffic Division is trying to search the plates, Secretary of State has at times reissued those plates. The credit company that we, the collections agency that we tried to use is only working at about a 7% pace, so it's better for us just to write off this bad debt than to go any further with it because we have not even allocated the line item to our budget for next year, so it's not like we're losing any money. It's just a wash, and I so move. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
One last thing, Your Honor. 25 new business licenses were started last month, and that's all I have. Thank you, Alderman Valco. Public Safety, Public Works, I'm sorry, Alderman Tempest. Alderman Moiseo has it, Your Honor. Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, request authorization to award annual material bids. Motion recommend the city council authorize the proper city officials to award the 2015, 2016 annual material bids, and we are going to hold out, though, the meter, the meters. That's going to be held out as far as the.
The water meters?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that part of it's being held over, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Thank you. Item B, request to award the proposal for lakefront environmental containment cell operation and maintenance services. Motion recommend the city council authorize the proper city officials to award the proposal for lakefront environmental containment cell operation and maintenance services to River Benz Engineering of Sternville, Wisconsin, for an amount not to exceed $35,970. Funds for this project are available on line item 10712924627, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Thank you. Item D, request to award North Lewis Avenue Water Main Replacement. Motion recommend the city council authorize the proper city officials to execute a contract with Campanell &amp; Sons Company of Wadsworth, Illinois, for an amount not, for an amount of $325,248.30. Funds for this project are available on line item 555916027043, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Thank you. Item D, request to award North Lewis Avenue Water Main Replacement. Motion recommend the city council authorize the proper city officials to execute a contract with Campanell &amp; Sons Company of Wadsworth, Illinois, for an amount not, for an amount of $325,248.30. Funds for this project are available on line item 555916027043, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Request to award a 2015 street maintenance curb and sidewalk contract. Motion recommend the city council authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract with D Land Construction of Bensonville, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $945,000. Funds for this project are available using bond proceeds, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item F, request to award a 2015 street maintenance contract. Motion recommend the city council authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Peter Baker &amp; Sons Company of Lake Bluff, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $6,555,000. Funds for this contract are available using bond proceeds, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item G, request to award engineering for the Waukegan Harbor area of Concerned Sustainable Shoreline Grant. Motion recommend the city council authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Deegan &amp; Associates for a federal grant for Sierra Strive area for an amount not to exceed $200,000, of which the grant will pay $150,000, and the city will pay $50,000, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye. Deegan is going to be doing what?
Doing the lakefront cleanup. He's doing, he's the environmental, our environmental.
No, no, not, no. My vote is no.
Okay.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item H, request to award the annual material bid for concrete. Motion recommend the city council authorize the proper city officials to award the 2015 Street Maintenance Contract. Motion recommend the City Council authorize the proper city officials to award the 2015-16 concrete and CLSM materials to Ozinga ready mix of Lake Bluff, Illinois. Funds for this are in the following line items, one hundred, nine-one-one, zero-two-five-four-six-eight, And I so move. Good Lord, Tina.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
And, uh, that's all, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Moiseo. Special Public Safety Committee meeting, Alderman Conken.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety Committee had a special meeting this evening at approximately six forty. We had two items on the agenda. Item A is to waive the bid process and purchase two 2015 Ford Police Interceptor SUVs at the state bid prices of twenty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and twenty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars from Morrow Brothers Ford under a state contract of four zero one seven one five nine. Funding for this purchase will be from the Federal Drug Asset Forfeiture Fund, line item two-nine-six, six-two-nine, six-two-six, four-nine-three, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Thank you. Item B, waive the bid process and purchase KVM switches at a cost of twenty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and forty-nine cents from Rose Electronics. Funding for this purchase will be from the Police Department Communications Division Computer Equipment, line item number one zero zero six zero seven zero two six four nine five, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
And, Your Honor, the only other thing we had was Mr. Belmonte also spoke at the Public Safety Meeting, and that's it, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Conken. Next is Labor Relations Committee, item A, motion to adopt ordinance, amending ordinance fourteen oh sixty-two, and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages to be paid to management and non-union employees of the City of Waukegan, Illinois, effective May first, two thousand and fifteen. The Labor Relations Committee met on April thirteenth. At that time, there were three, uh, three, three items presented to the Labor Relations Committee. The first item presented was the movement of the collector from tier three to tier two. The next item was the HR manager to be now known and classified as the HR Director. And the third item was an across-the-race board, across-the-board raise of two percent for all management and non-union employees that passed through Labor Relations unanimously. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Conken, to approve a motion to adopt the ordinance amending fourteen dash sixty-two, and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages to be paid to management and non-management employees. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
I have something that I'd like to say.
Uh, go ahead, Alderman Beedling.
Union carpenters right now are still three dollars and thirty-five cents below on the paycheck what they were getting in January of 2010. This just keeps escalating. I, I, I request, I've been saying it for the last three years, at least for police and fire, who's, we're responsible for their pension funds, at least, if they get a pay raise, attribute it to their pension fund rather than going on the check. The reason that the carpenters pay is still, it was six, six four, six dollars and forty cents an hour, and now it's three forty, is to shore up our pension fund. I read this Moody's report, you know, everybody accepts that government, well, the taxpayers are responsible. When are the, when, when are government employees gonna be responsible for their own destiny? They, they need to have a little more skin in the game. I don't, I don't think it would be unreasonable to request that police sergeants to contribute the six percent they're gonna get over the next three years to their pension fund to save their own cause. PBLC, they could fall in line just as well. But no, this is the taxpayer's responsibility. Mister Ask Me that came up here, you should read the resolution. He expects the city to pass this resolution. They're, they, they don't wanna see any changes in workman's compensation. This state's broke. Businesses are leaving. Government costs keep going up. When are we gonna hold the line here? We need to have a discussion here. I'll be leaving shortly, but I mean, somebody needs to have a discussion with all city employees here and explain the plight of the private sector employee. I've tried to sit in on, asked, I've requested to sit in on labor negotiations to, to express the private sector's point of view, never allowed to. I can't understand why, yet we can have policemen and, and attorneys that used to be policemen, they can sit in on the negotiations. Who represents the taxpayer here? It's all long-term government employees, no one from the private sector. This is poison, and it's gonna come back to bite this city. Like I said, that Moody's report, if we don't pay the ARC funding, I would never vote for that, because they don't have enough skin in the game. Both police and fire, nine-point-nine-one percent and nine-point-four-five percent, I think, it never changes. They're gonna get a six percent raise over the next three years, but guess what? The retirees are getting a nine percent raise over the next three years, because they have three percent compounding. Annual cost of living increase, so how does that math work out? Goes on the paycheck, just makes the pension fund worse funded, and more pressure on the taxpayers to make the proper contribution. We're broke here. I don't have any more to say, thanks.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Uh, next item, new business recommended, recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A, approval of payroll dated April seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount, uh, regular payroll in the amount of one million, three-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, one-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents. MAP retro pay, uh, seven thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. Civil service, two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Donation to Park City Officer, ten thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Your Honor, what is that donation of ten thousand dollars?
Tina, Wayne?
That's, do you want me to answer it?
It was a fundraiser.
No, you want me to answer it?
Yeah.
I'm gonna bring it up, Police Officer Cervantes in Park City had a stroke.
Okay.
Several officers, and I was gonna bring that up during Alderman's time, but I'll bring it up now, there were several officers in Waukegan who donated money. And the city took it out of their check. And so I don't have to say this at Alderman's time. The top two contributors were Kenneth Pitten, Officer Pitten, at thirty-three hundred dollars, and the second one was Elias Sagalianos, who donated almost two thousand dollars of their own money.
So they took it out of their check?
They took it out of their check, and they're donating it right to Park City.
Fine.
Cut the checking off.
That's it. Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated April twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of five-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, ninety-two dollars and thirteen cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item C, motion to approve the Waukegan Vista Cream Bike Race sponsored by the City of Waukegan Chamber of Commerce, including the closing of Genesee Street to Clayton Street, Clayton Street to Sheridan Road, Sheridan Road to Water Street, and Water Street to Genesee Street, from seven-thirty a.m. to seven p.m. on July twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. This is an approved outdoor special event. Motion by Alderman Beedling, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item D, motion to approve the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year May one, two thousand and fifteen, through April thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
May I speak on that?
Yes, you may.
I'm gonna vote for it today, but you know, in the future, years ago, we went line item by line item by line item, and we took time to do it. I think this council would have a better understanding of where each dollar is going if we would go back to that old-fashioned way of going line item by line item. I know we had long, drawn-out meetings, but you were much better informed of where every dollar goes. Just for me to meet with Tina is not the same for me to bring up a question that Conken hears, everybody else hears, and it gets our minds going of where we're spending the money and how it's going. So, in the future, I would hope that we'd go back to the old, old way of going line item by line item and spend the time on the appropriation ordinance, as I think it so surely deserves. Not that we haven't. I went with Tina, and she was kind enough to go through with me, but just one person, with one person is not the same as a group hearing what Conken got to say, what Moiseo has to say, what Cunningham has to say. It's different. It, it makes your mind work a little better. I really believe that, Your Honor. I'd hope in the future we, we could go back to that old way of doing things. I know it's an old way, but I've been around it a while.
Thank you, Alderman Tempest.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Your Honor, and I'm sorry that you've started this vote, but I thought we'd have a little bit more discussion about it. I'm gonna go back to Alderman Tempest's point. I'm gonna bring up another aspect of, of the appropriation, particularly in an election year. I know when I became an Alderman, my freshman year, I was able to vote on that budget that I was coming into. In the past, particularly the past four years, I understand the past four years, a little bit different with the indifferent administration, but I don't see the need for us to move forward with this budget until that new council comes on. Reason being, this is how the new council get acclimated to all of what's going on in the City of Waukegan. This is the best time for them to do it, for us to pass it. I don't see a need for us to pass it at this time. Alderman Tempest is exactly right. Two weeks, fine. Another thirty days, you might have some, some questions about this. I, I, I'm not comfortable in passing this budget, more particularly, we have two brand-new freshman Aldermen who need to understand what is going on. Three. So I, I, my hope right now, and I thought Alderman Tempest was gonna be doing this, I thought he was gonna be doing this, holding this over, and maybe there are some other he was gonna be doing this, holding this over, and maybe there are some other questions that are out there for Tina, for you, and for others to ask.
May I have a comment, Alderman?
Sure.
We just passed, we sold bonds today.
Okay.
Seven point five million dollars. Tom Haggerty is ready to start road repair tomorrow. It's imperative that we get this appropriation passed so he can begin to get his people together because they will not entertain any roadwork until this appropriations and budget is passed. Therefore, it's very time-sensitive. I had an opportunity to talk to every one of you. Tina and I talked to every one of you on several occasions. We asked you several times if you had questions, concerns, issues, please bring it to us before tonight's meeting so we can address those concerns. I had an occasion to talk to Alderman Tempest today. I explained to him in detail the necessity of getting this budget passed as quickly as we could simply because we're sitting on seven and a half million dollars, and we wanna get that money on task and get those roads started. That's why I'm asking you to not hold this budget over tonight. I understand your concerns about the three new Aldermen. I've had an occasion to talk to those three Aldermen. They are very well aware of what my intent was tonight. They knew that I would want this group of individuals who have sat on this budget hearings now for several months to go ahead and pass this budget. They will have many opportunities along the next four years to get involved in budget appropriations and budgeting. So, that's why I'm asking you to please do not hold this over. Let's pass this through. Let's let Tom Haggerty do his job. Thank you.
You know what, Your Honor? And I'm gonna take you on a history lesson for a hot second here. I did the same thing with the Genesee Theater. It's hot. It has to do it right now. If we don't do it right now, we're gonna miss the opportunity. See, I did that, and that's very dear to me because every time we need to make something, and under Bob Sabanjan, we have to do it right now. If we don't do it right now, things are not gonna be right. We have to do it right now. No, we don't have to do it right now. We are a government, and sometimes in government, it goes a little bit slower than we anticipate, but I think when we do it that way, I think we do it right. Now, Tina has been able to do this ten or fifteen days. What if I have some questions in two weeks from now? We have until, if I'm not mistaken, Alderman Tempest has always said it in the past, June, what is it, June, what, Alderman Tempest?
July.
In July. We have until July to pass a budget. Peter Baker's been working with us for the last, I got sixteen years on this council. Peter Baker has been our guy for sixteen years since I've been here. If anyone knows how we work, and the credibility we tell is Peter Baker's Peter Baker. When they're gonna get the money? It's gonna be there. The bonds are sold, they're there. I'm gonna stand firm with you, you should allow those new Aldermen to be up here and go through this process as we are doing. That is my belief. It has worked, it's worked when I came here, and that was probably the best experience I could have received as a freshman Alderman on this council, in very the most critical aspects of it. It is the money that we're dealing with. So, when you go back to your constituents, you are able to effectively and with knowledge explain what is going on within the city of Waukegan government, because there's a lot. That is my opinion. I hope other Aldermen chime in, but I don't think we need to pass a budget, not just because you're saying, because Tom Haggerty and Peter Baker get his road. We've done this before, and if we have to, we can pass a portion of that budget and move on.
Your Honor? Alderman Moiseo?
I think by law, we have to, we have to pass the appropriations, and we can't spend it, am I right?
Right.
Tina? So, we can't tell Peter Baker, go ahead and start.
Right.
We got the money.
Well, hold on.
By law, we can't, by law, we cannot pay anybody, do anything until we pass the appropriations. We can't, by law.
But, Moisey, Moisey, hold on a second, man. I got sixteen years. You got just as many as I do.
Yeah.
We have passed an amended appropriation to move forward. So, don't say what we can't do. Just say you wanna pass this and move on. Now, Tina, I know we've done this before.
Tina, why don't you step up here?
I know we've done this before.
We didn't have six million dollars of road.
Oh, that's fine.
You can roll over the prior-year appropriation for up to ninety days.
Thank you.
So, you'd be operating under the prior-year appropriation, not the 15-16 appropriation. And just to clarify, the bond proceeds specifically related to the geo-sales tax bonds we did are in the 15-16 appropriation.
Okay.
So, that specific contract, we could not issue a PO and release funds on that until the new appropriation is passed.
I have, those roads been waiting how long, Tom? They've been waiting a lot of years.
Too long.
Thirty more days is not gonna hurt us.
In the construction season, I believe it will.
I'm sorry, sir?
As soon as our construction season is up, it's pretty short season now, but that's our program.
Okay. Okay.
If we wait till middle of May, it's not a good one. We start waiting until end of July, season's pretty much over for this side of the program.
Okay. And I do thank you, Tom, and I know this is for you and what you've been trying to achieve out of Public Works. I know what I'm saying is heartbreaking to you, and I feel for you, I really do, Tom. No one is more sensitive to Public Works than Sam Cunningham. They have endured more in the past six to seven years without the bodies that other departments have received, without the equipment that other departments have received. So, no one up here is more sensitive to what Tom really is trying to achieve. If anything, if anything, we probably should be adding it to his budget so we can get the new equipment and the bodies that's necessary for him to run a more efficient and effective But I am not agreeing that we need to do it because of Tom Haggerty. I'm not in that agreement, I'm not in that agreement, Your Honor. I'm in agreement that I think those new freshman Aldermen should have an opportunity to go over and have input when it comes to this budget. That's what I'm agreeing with it. I'm not gonna hold it over. You got the votes to pass it, move on, but I'm voting no on that and that only.
Okay, Alderman, let me make a clarification, just so you understand this. My intent was to try to get this passed tonight, knowing that if it didn't get passed, it could be passed in two weeks. That being said, the new Aldermen would not vote on this year's budget because it would come under old business under next city council meeting. So, they would not have an opportunity to vote on this budget, period.
Your Honor, I hear what you're saying, but we as a council can move it over to the new business. We have that authority, sir. If you want the budget passed, I'm not gonna hold it over. I'm being very sensitive to Tom Haggerty right now and what he's trying to achieve with our road program, but I'm not buying the fact that it's gonna be on the old business. We've done this before. I know what we've done before.
Okay, I thank you, Alderman.
So, are we on vote count right now? Maria? My vote is no.
Alderman Conken?
I'm gonna agree with Alderman Tempest. I think we should go line item by line item, but I, my vote is yes.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome? Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Velco?
Thank you, ma'am. All of you should know by now that I'm a staunch supporter of the men and women in blue, whether it be for the police department or the fire department. And tonight, kudos to the police department because, as I said before, we have spent tonight for two SUV vehicles fifty-seven thousand dollars, and it came out of the Federal Drug Asset Forfeiture Fund, which encompasses our officers in DEA and ICE, which is Immigration and Customs Enforcement, and our own narcotics team. So, Chief, my congratulations to those officers. Keep up the good work because the two vehicles that we purchased tonight didn't cost the citizens of Waukegan one cent. That's all I have, ma'am.
Alderman Cunningham?
There is an award that was given to the city of Waukegan. I happened to just be there for another reason, and the, let me make sure I read it right. Your Honor, I need to present this to you, then you can present it, I guess, to the council. It is the Fuller Center for Housing Hero Project of Lake County, Housing Hero, City of Waukegan, 2015. Thank you for your commitment to help families improve their lives through home ownership. Because of you, we have raised over a hundred thousand dollars to rehab two homes debt-free, hired fifteen contractors, and distribute thousands of dollars in in-kind resources to families and small businesses. I thought I would give this to you, Your Honor, on behalf of them, because I was there, but it's to the city of Waukegan, it belongs to you. That's my first one, and I don't, tonight, I am very emotional when it comes to how we operate. I don't make any bones about it. That's just the way I am now. This city, obviously, is loved by, I think, everybody, more particularly these Aldermen and mayor and others who are elected to give our city the best that we can give it. And sometimes it comes with, you know, difficult decisions, or maybe sometimes a controversy. I accept that now, but I accept it with respect. With that being said, tonight, the mayor talked about young men, for this particular reason, young men, but I wanna talk about young men and young ladies, and keeping them out of the streets. For the last five years, I've had an opportunity to do some part-time work at Lake County Jail, and it hardens me to see some of the young men come in there and some of the decisions and choices they've made in life. But I have to reflect on my own self and say, that could have been Sam, but because of the Waukegan fruit market, because of the city of Waukegan, because of small, odd jobs, the Madonia Brothers, AMP, I was able to work at those little deals at an early age and gain some understanding of, you know, self-sufficiency. But I do understand today that our young men, our young ladies, we're losing them, ladies and gentlemen. We are losing them at an alarming rate. I think the minds of some would say they're all black kids and Latino kids. No. We're losing our kids, our children. I am gonna be on a crusade for summer employment for our young men and our young ladies. I was eleven years old when I started working at the Waukegan fruit market. I hope there's no laws in there, Steve, and get them in trouble.
Statual limitation.
Statual limitation, eleven years old. I was potatoes, watermelons, filling up freezers, whatever have you, at age eleven, at tenth in laws. And today, you have to be fifteen years of age to even work. You have to have a permit to work now. It was no permit for me, it was just go. I know we hear all the time that there are no jobs. There's a lot of jobs for these young boys and these young girls to do, because if we don't, everyone, you're gonna find them locked up someplace, dead, but more importantly, being recruited by gangs or negative elements. We, as a city, I think in the county, even the state of Illinois, we have a responsibility to these kids. That's to give them some work in the summertime. Granted, they can't all go out Tom Haggerty. I remember Walter Griffin used to be out there. The man was pulling out his hair. I wasn't the best worker out there, but I tried. There needs to be a collective effort to put young kids to work from fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen years of age, and more importantly, from our high schools. I am sick and tired of telling them, no. No, we don't have anything for you. No, there's nothing to do here. But the minute they get in trouble, our boys in blue have to do their job. I'm asking the mayor and all of my colleagues up here, how can we find a way to get these young boys and these young girls something to do in the summertime? I can give you example for me. I've never had a run-in with the police, never. Were living in public housing on the south side of town. Alderman Velco? Mayor, Steve? Never. Not an encounter. Why? 'Cause I was at the fruit market all during those times. When I would come home, they've been there and gone. I believe that approach for our young men today is still there. We are losing young boys, black, white, Hispanic, and now the ladies are getting involved in this. In the summertime, we have to put them to work. We have to do something to make sure they don't get caught up. Now, you might not feel the way I do, but the community I represent, which is the first ward, income per capita was the lowest, probably the state of Illinois, definitely in the county, I have to be creative. I have to find different ways of looking at this approach, because if not, I know where they're gonna end up at. These bangers gonna recruit them, and our jail system's gonna keep them. I would never thought I would say this, Ray, but I never thought I would love to hear Walter Griffin's call my name over the radio, asking me what I'm doing. No one, I think, is better than having somebody on them as Tom Haggerty. It was Bob Johnson for me at the time.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, you're right, oh, Lord. And that's what they need, tough love. It worked for me, worked for Moiseo, I think everybody in this room. Tommy, I see your dad out there. He didn't...
I used to run the sidewalk, I used to run the traffic.
It worked, it works. But we have to find ways as leaders to make it even better. So, that's the mission I'm gonna be on, Your Honor. I'm gonna get on my soapbox. I hope you're ready for this, but I believe that we need to find something for these young boys and these young girls to do in the summertime. I'm not advocating they go and paint all the curves, Tom, and have all the paint on them. I know that's a headache for you. We got big forest preserves, we have big parks out here, park districts, we have other governmental agencies. This needs to be a county-wide effort to get these young kids something to do in the summertime. If not, they're gonna find something to do, and I tell you, it's not what we want it to be. That's it, thank you, and wish me luck.
Alderman Conken?
Thank you. First, I'd just like to say that it's been a great ride. It's been a great six and a half years that I've been here. I'd like to especially thank Mayor Dick Hyde for having the confidence in me to take over when Alderman Baylen passed away. I'd like to also thank the Second Ward, people of the Second Ward, for sending me here for the last six years. It's been a privilege to serve them. I wanna thank Mayor Sabanjan also for having, for leading the city through the tough times we had back then, all the layoffs that we had to put up with and get the city through. And then the Mayor Motley, I wanna thank you. Hopefully, your dynamic leadership is gonna take us through even into better times. I'd like to see that. I also wanna send my congratulations and thanks to all the previous councils and the previous Aldermen that I've served with. To be an Alderman, you have to love your neighborhood. I think everyone up here does. You also have to love the city. I also believe that of all of our councilmen and our mayor. But I am gonna leave them with one option and one suggestion before I go. Our founding fathers, when they started this country, knew it was a poor system if they had the opportunity to completely turn over your leadership. I've suggested this, and I've talked to the mayor and everyone about this before, most of the people here have talked about it, but to alleviate that fear, they set it up where all the senators get elected only one-third at a time. Now, in the past two elections, we've had a one-third turnover at this council. The thing is, it's possible to turn over the entire council, and that would leave this council and the city with inexperienced people. So, I'd like to charge this council, or the new council, with possibly setting up a new election in the next cycle where either the even-numbered Aldermen or the odd-numbered Aldermen run for an odd number of years, thereby staggering the elections and making sure that you could never have a complete turnover to council. It's been also an honor to serve as the chairman of the Public Safety Committee. Chief Wallace, Chief Farrell, thank you, and a special thanks to Maria Borhome, the chief secretary, for taking care of all the public safety notifications. I believe that's all I have. Thank you very much. One more other thing, is I've been lucky enough that I had a father that worked for this city, so I had some insight before I came here, and I had someone to talk to. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Progressive is just a fancy word for communist, I think. I'd like to relate a story, you know, from about two years ago. Ask Me, the state, Governor Quinn, actually, he got a private contractor to take over the task of rooting out Medicaid fraud, because Ask Me did a piss-poor job at it. What happened? They sued, and the governor had to fire the private contractor and bring back the incompetent government union employees to do it. I think what Ask Me needs to do is be more concerned with quality amongst their ranks rather than protecting the incompetent. It's almost impossible to fire a government worker. You have to do something really wrong to get fired if you're a government employee. So, I would appreciate if Ask Me would start taking care of their own business, don't write in the coattails of organized labor, especially the trades unions.
You do realize...
I'm not work...
...I say the American Constitution...
Sir, sir, sir.
Sorry.
Continue, Alderman. Sorry. Doesn't matter, doesn't matter. This country is choked by government employee unions. Should've never been allowed to start in the first place. I don't agree with Governor Roner's position and right to work because I don't think that's what Wisconsin did. I meant to look that up on the internet, what Act 10 is. I think that just affects government union employees. I could be wrong, but I believe in the prevailing wage, especially the trades unions. Our apprentice programs are top-notch. There are no programs in the, in non-union trades that have anything even near what the union trades offer as far as apprenticeship training. Jobs? I believe in telling it like it is. You know, Alderman Cunningham's right. You know, I'm sixty-one. I never had a problem finding a job, yet kids nowadays can't find any jobs. Here we're looking at another government-created problem. Our kids can't find jobs, yet our borders are wide open. We don't enforce e-verify to ensure that employers are hiring only those legally entitled to work in this country, because the progressives, they're all warm and fuzzy over things like That's the biggest danger to our country is the progressive movement, and if the American public doesn't wake up soon, there's not gonna be anything left. We won't even recognize our country. I get tired of looking in the TV, watching the TV, and seeing illegal aliens demanding rights, protesting. I read a lot, so I read, what does Mexico do? Well, it turns out, if you protest in Mexico, you get promptly arrested and you're deported. You're not allowed to become a citizen of Mexico unless you have a lot of money. Maybe, maybe if Mexico and Central American countries offered the same level of welfare benefits that the United States does, we wouldn't have a problem with people coming over the border. But we offer up so much in this country to sit at home and do nothing, and I don't begrudge anyone who needs a helping hand, but we're killing ourselves in this country quick, and government is not the solution. They just make it worse and worse and worse. And I love our police department. But when it comes to the pension funding, they need to dig into their pocket and contribute to their own cause, just like what happens in the private sector. When we get a new contract in the carpenters' union, there's always an allocation. It doesn't go in the paycheck. Some of it goes in the paycheck, some of it goes to pension fund, and some of it goes into insurance. When the market is down... When the market is down, well, that's when the union has to take money out of the working membership's pay to make up pension. I think, I think government needs to start reflecting more closely what the private sector experience is here. I would appreciate that. Our police and fire personnel are paid very well. I don't think it would hurt them to not get a two percent increase of their paycheck for the next three years. And like I pointed out, their retirees are getting three percent compounding every year, so they're not even getting what the retirees are getting. I think you would call that a pyramid scheme? I'm not sure. I'm not going to thank anyone. I worked very hard the last four years, and I appreciated doing this job. And I'll look forward to brighter days in this city, but I think we have to be very careful of being too optimistic, because, like I said, I read a lot, and that's not what I read. I think we better be saving our money and being frugal for rainy days ahead. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Thank you. I want to talk about a couple of different items related to our beach. We had the opportunity to have the Great Lakes Surf Rescue Project come last year and give water safety presentation for free to the City of Waukegan. It wasn't very well-intended, but I think it was very well-received by those that did attend. So this year, when they contacted a few of us that have been at the class, they were offering school presentations. So we reached out to the school district, and only two schools responded, but this is happening. They did the presentations at the school, and they're really well-received. This group, Great Lakes Surf Rescue, gives the classes. The IDNR provides the funding for them. Alls I do is try to connect people and try to make it happen. We live on.
My microphone's on. We live on the lakefront, and I sometimes wonder if this community has an identity crisis and doesn't realize we're a lakefront community. Kids go to school, and when you ask them, "What do you have, what do you do when some, you know, when you're in trouble, dial nine-one-one? What happens if you catch on fire? Stop, drop, and roll?" Every kid knows that. They know about defend-in-place drills, like if there's a school shooter, severe weather drills. All these kids, their whole education are educated on these things, but drowning in the United States kills more children than fire, lightning, tornadoes, and school shooters combined. We've had more hundred, I think it's three-hundred-and-eighty-four drownings in the Great Lakes in the past five years, and Waukegan is part of those statistics. So I'm kind of on a mission, too, to bring water safety and to get our community, Waukegan, to recognize that we are a lakefront community, we're, we are a coastal community. And so I hope next year, I hope the principals of Cook Magnet and Greenwood School talk up the program, and we get more schools to participate next year in this water safety presentation. But there's still an opportunity for the general public. On June sixth, at Waukegan Yacht Club, the Great Lakes Surf Rescue Project will be once again doing their full water safety presentation course. There's a meet and greet at eight-thirty at the Waukegan Yacht Club. Class starts at nine. At eleven o'clock, we move down to the shore of, down on South Beach, and we actually practice some of the techniques that they talk about in the program. It's a great program, kids, families. I encourage everyone to attend. The way to RSVP to this class, you go to Facebook, Great Lakes Surf Rescue Project, or the Waukegan Yacht Club page does have information, or you can contact me. I have a Facebook, my email, however you can get ahold of me. So I encourage everyone in Waukegan to participate or talk to someone. Come on down, June sixth, for the water safety presentations. The second thing I'd like to talk about is, on behalf of Friends of Waukegan Beach, we are kicking off our cleanup season. Once again, we're recruiting community groups to help us with beach clean sweep, cleanup sweeps on the weekends. I did reach out to the groups from last year. We probably had hundreds, hundreds of people, but several groups come down last year. It's open again. You can email me at lisamay7@gmail.com, and I, or you can go on the city website and you can email directly from there, and I'd be happy to sign your group up. We will have a city representative. It's either me or David, or I think we have another person in our group this summer who's going to help facilitate these beach sweeps, but we really, it's a great opportunity for community service, for your local church group, Girl Scouts, whatever. So please give me or David Motley a call, and we'll get you set up for the summer. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Motion by Alderman Beedling, second by Alderman Cunningham, to go into executive session to discuss real estate sales or lease. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
The time now is eight-thirty-five. We're going to, motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham, to come back into session. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman May. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most, meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.